The. Grand Forks County Commission will come to order for its regular meeting. The. All commissioners are present at this time. The first matter before the commission would be the approval of the minutes. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, sign if you.
Discussion.
You have what it's wow, this is first excellent, thank you.
All I wanna know simple is it is it for both sets of.
Yeah, we had two.
We have two, two sets.
It is, okay.
Okay, so, alright.
Very good. And and the second is for both sets, is that correct?
Commissioner Peach, second.
Commissioner Peach.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, we've clarified this for both sets of minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next, we have the order of agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to add?
There may be a second special event, but I'm not sure the ground round here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So there'll be three special event permits instead of.
And and that's all with that, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. We have a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knott. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Next before us is the approval of the consent agenda. And. Ms. Nelson would like to add the purchasing card statement to the consent agenda bill section. You probably all got a copy of the purchasing card.
Yeah, yeah.
So can we have a motion to add that?
Oh, that'd be added to the consent agenda, so you can just add it after the meeting.
Thank you. Motion, second.
Second.
Second by Ross. All in favor so that the cons. Well, I guess we have to first add that. All in favor of adding the purchasing card statement to the bills. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's added to the bills now. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes and we are to the ground round. You state your name for the record, please.
Danielle Hudson, from the ground round, Grand Forks.
Okay. And. Well, there it is. I was looking for a white copy, but. You're asking for a. Wedding reception. I'm reading that.
Social, it looks like, still getting it five P M.
Okay.
Last call eleven thirty.
And where is this going to take place?
The Woodland Lodge at Turtle River. Same room.
Okay.
They're two different, next one.
Oh, I see, sorry, thank you. Well, I guess we should probably approve each one of these separately. Any question on the the special event permit for the Woodland Lodge at Turtle River?
This is all declared by the park. State park ranger.
Yeah. I think some of the license was. Mister Chair, member of the commission, the first one is October twenty second and the other one at Turtle River is what's it, October first, October first.
And you've got to pay on this first one, obviously.
No, I have not received the fees.
Okay. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve condition of the fee being paid?
Almost.
Second by Commissioner Knott. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Turtle River on October twenty second is approved. Then the second one. Like another wedding reception.
October first, Sonic.
That's a turtle or all, so is it?
Yes.
Any questions on this one? We have a motion.
So moved. With the fees being paid.
Thank you. Any second, second by Commissioner Knott. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the October first. Third one, apparently.
Mister.
Yeah.
Chairman, member of the commission, I will pass out the applications to set me this morning. Yeah, Grand Sky, B D I International is having. There. Et cetera. With a more reception.
It wasn't long ago Grand Sky didn't think to do this.
What?
Wasn't long ago Grand Sky didn't think to do this, so you don't have credit on this one.
Can I just ask what M M W hospitality stands for?
Um, that's just the name of our organization. We're down on this stuff. We're doing businesses around, okay, the parent company for ground.
Okay, I just didn't know if they were initials or they meant something or just curious.
But are they ownerships?
All right, can we have a motion if someone is inclined to approve the special use permit for Grand Sky on October third, condition on the fee being paid?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Peach, any further discussion?
You know, listen, the. We talked with the ranger on the other ones. Have you worked with Sheriff's Department for Grand Sky?
Have I personally?
Well, has anyone from your company?
They have no concerns.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. So need to take care of the fees with the.
Seventy five dollars to Grand Forks County. Thank you.
Permits, thank you very much. Oh, we are.
Mister Chairman, there's. Twenty twenty three budget booklet on your desk. I have the front cover is everything that I'm gonna go over. Listed under item six is the levy calculations, budget booklet, the cash estimates, the cash balances, the revenues and expenditures, they're all in this binder. So you've got all of that information in there. Final budget for Grand First County is twenty five million eight hundred sixty eight thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars. Including the levies for the state garrison, ambulance, ambulance. And the airport. They are levies that are. With all at one mil. Regardless of what our valuation is, when our valuation changes, it doesn't go down from one mil. So we've got state garrison one mil, ambulance six mil, senior citizens one and airport four. The dollars levy decreased a hundred forty three thousand twenty dollars from the preliminary budget approved on August second, twenty twenty two. August sixteenth, you approves removing a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars from the Director of Administration's budget for base retention. Also, on August sixteenth, the commission agreed to increase the levy for the library, so the levy are the library would be eligible to receive the state aid for libraries. The library's net levy had decreased from the average of the three preceding years. And because of that, they would not be able to receive the state aid for library, so we, you increased that. Since the preliminary budget was approved, the valuation has increased. Centrally centrally assessed values increased eight point one percent over last year. What's really good. So gas and electric increased twelve percent, row roads increased ten percent and pipelines decreased by nine point four. So an overall increase of eight point one. The estimated value of a mil was three hundred and forty six thousand nine twenty five, that's six hundred dollars more than was. Preliminary budget. And that's four point three percent greater than it was last year. We are letting three point one eight mils more than last year's. Capital construct, construction increased two million four hundred twenty four thousand two hundred eighty two thousand for the annual debt service on a bond not to exceed thirty five million. Salaries in increased. We have included a three percent step increase for qualified employees on their seniority date. Five percent cost of living increased January first, twenty twenty three. The state's attorney sheriff and commission are included in the COLA for a cost of one point one. Longevity pay was increased from three dollars a month to four dollars a month, not to exceed seven hundred dollars, seven hundred and five dollars for qualified employees. That is cost of fifteen thousand five eighty six. Health insurance, we were given a range between five to twelve percent increase, we still haven't heard what it's going to be, but twelve percent is included in the budget for four hundred and five thousand dollars. Increase in staff. The staff are the state's attorney reclassified position from part time to full time, but had no cost because the sixty two thousand dollar cost for that was offset with fifty thousand dollars from asset forfeiture and by lowering their hourly employee line item. Juvenile detention promoted an officer. To manage their team. There's no cost for that because we no longer.
Take this rate of minutes. Hope they didn't vote for downtown.
Somebody must be. Born across the tracks or something, they're working. Yeah, we don't. Bills.
The sheriff added a non benefit, benefited deputy for twenty three thousand dollars. The end is the extension position was increased from point eight to one full time equivalent. The costs split between the county and the state are cost is two thousand four ninety two dollars for that. The capital improvement budget decreased from two million to one million. The general fund is at four forty five point zero five mils of a maximum sixty mils. We are using about four point five million dollars in cash in the general fund. If we did not have the cash, we would be at fifty eight point zero two mils. The next couple of pages show the differences between every department in the general fund and special revenue. Though the human service zone indirect cost did not increase from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. Nor did the fair. Insurance reserve is increased by forty thousand dollars. We've got five thousand dollars in workers' comp, fifty thousand dollars more in liability insurance. Advertising did an increase. There a correctional center went up four hundred and twenty six thousand five twenty four. Most of that was because of the increase in salaries and benefits. They also had a forty thousand dollar for furniture and equipment, thirty two thousand for building repairs, twenty four thousand five hundred for fuel and gas and twelve thousand dollar increase in service agreements. The board of commissioners went up thirteen thousand one sixty, ten thousand six hundred and ten for salaries and benefits and eighteen fifty four dues. Human resources went up thirty three thousand five hundred and fifty one or ten percent increase, salaries and benefits went up twenty seven thousand nine fifteen and they are going to have. They have included higher click software for forty eight fifty. Director of administration went decreased by twenty one thousand two seventy four. They had an additional position added to their budget. Salaries and benefits increased ten thousand six thirty two, travel increased seven thousand and Grand Sky admin five thousand, but they removed a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars for the base retention. So that's why they had a decrease. No change in district court or sexually dangerous finance and tax, we had a thirty nine thousand seven fifty five dollar increase and all of it was related to salaries and benefits. State's attorney, two hundred and forty thousand eight sixty eight. All is related to salaries and benefits and if you took into account the fifty thousand dollar revenue offset, they would be at a hundred and eighty eight nine seventy two or four six point four one percent increase. Victims, witnesses did not increase, three quarter was thirty two thousand eight thirty two with all salaries and benefits. Superintendent of schools, salaries three hundred and eighty dollar increase, tax equalization of all salaries. Information technology, thirty two thousand seven hundred and nine dollar increase, seven thousand dollars education and training, five thousand dollars for an external website developer, eleven thousand eight hundred dollars service agreement increase and a five thousand dollar equipment rental increase. Employee benefits increased a thousand dollars for live well and the insurance company, T I C. Buildings and crowns increased eighty eight thousand five seventeen, twenty three thousand one twenty four for salaries and benefits, fifty thousand dollars for repairs and ninety three fifty for service agreements. Elections went down a hundred and fifty five fifty because twenty twenty three is a non election year. P S A P increased thirty three thousand one seventy two. Grand Forks County is twenty one point one seven percent of the total. It's based on a five year call average and they, and it also includes two additional dispatchers because of the service demand. County memberships did not increase at forty thousand one hundred. Contracted services, we had. An increase in the C D I C. Five thousand, two thousand for community service and fourteen thousand decrease for youth works. Utility is increased thirty two thousand seven point six three percent. The conference room, just a hundred dollars more there. Capital improvements went down a million dollars. The sheriff. Two hundred and seventy two, two ninety five. Two hundred and one is from salaries and benefits and then twenty two thousand four thirty eight for the hourly non benefit position and they had to add seventy two thousand dollars for gas. Right, gases increased. Juvenile detention, thirty two thousand five eighty seven increased. They had forty thousand dollars eight ninety in salaries and benefits, but they had a ten thousand decrease in service rate. Mental health didn't change at eighty one thousand, the coroner didn't change at a hundred and sixty thousand fifty nine dollars. Emergency management increased sixteen thousand eight thirty, all which is due to salaries and benefits. Hunting and zoning nine thousand dollar increase, salaries and benefits. Miscellaneous increased five thousand dollars, we added, you added five thousand dollars to the Grand Board Historical Society that will come out of the general fund in addition to their levy. All the remaining are offset hundred percent by revenue. We are using a million dollars or approximately a million dollars more in cash than we did last year. We had less revenue than we did last year, sort of about two hundred and eighty thousand or a net decrease in general fund of about six hundred thousand or two point four percent. Next page shows you all the special revenue terms that we've let before. The county road and bridge is a decrease of four hundred and eleven thousand. They're just below ten mils and the reason they are is because the valuation increased after we had already set the budget. So they're at nine point nine eight mils. They have less revenue, cash and revenue, and that's why they have decreased. The historical society, three thirty two sixty eight. Increase, valuation increased, they get a quarter of a mil and therefore that is why it went up. And senior citizens, senior citizens the same. The emergency fund, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Veterans, twenty five thousand six eighty seven. Most of that is dollars and benefits. Also fifty two hundred dollars for veteran D A B ban. And then economic development, fifty five hundred. Increase economic or N D S U extension, nineteen thousand one sixty seven increase, all which is due to the cost allocation that they paid the county. City and county health increased eighteen thousand five twenty. Their salaries increased twenty thousand dollars. The weed increased eleven thousand seven thirty six. Capital construction, two million three hundred seventy thousand three hundred forty dollars. They're at six point nine nine mils. Special assessments, we have five thousand dollars and. State and garrison increased because the valuation increased. The water resource board stayed the same at the hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The library, we put that fifteen thousand seven hundred dollar increase, so they will get the state aid to libraries. Red River joint had requested one point five mils. They have a third thirty five thousand three two dollar increase. The ambulance is at six mils, it was voted on by people. So they have an eighty two thousand one hundred seventy dollar increase. Airport, eighty six ninety four dollar increase value and that's because of valuation increase. And the soil stayed the same of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The highway department is listed there, although we do not levy for the highway and it decreased thirty three thousand three hundred twenty nine compared to last year. We have three hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred forty three dollars more in cash than we had last year and we have less revenue than we did last year of two hundred and sixty two thousand. Our net levy increasing. Same amounts that we are going to do for capital. We have an eight point five three percent increase over last year. So we talked about the increase in the value for mil, it's fourteen thousand three hundred and ten dollars more per mil. Last year. Estimated mil, mils for twenty twenty three for Grand Forks city property is seventy nine point six three mils compared to seventy six point two four, a three point three nine percent or mil increase or four point four percent. If you live outside the city, you are not subject, you are subject to the airport and weed and the soil levy that they are not in Grand Forks city, so it's slightly greater at eighty point one seven compared to eighty four point nine nine or three point one. Or three point eight, or three point one eight percent or mils or three point seven percent increase. So I show you how you calculate the. Increase in dollars that we receive because of their increase in valuation, it's one point one million dollars that we received more because the valuation went up. And if we didn't have that, we would have to increase three point three two mils more. So the twenty twenty three Grand Forks County budget is approximately three point one eight mils greater than it was last year. And if you had a two hundred thousand dollar home in the city of Grand Forks and your valuation didn't increase, the portion of your taxes related to Grand Forks County would have increased twenty eight dollars and sixty two cents. Commercial property would be thirty one point eight. Thirty one dollars and eighty cents. I've listed the contracted services there. Community service went up from fourteen thousand to sixteen thousand. It has a two thousand dollar increase and that's the first time it's increased since twenty fourteen. The humane society. When, it stayed the same at twenty thousand. Youth works, we are no longer funding them for the attendant care program. C D I C went from a hundred thousand to one oh five. The children's advocacy centers stayed the same at twenty six, six sixty seven. The detox center increased from eighty one five fifty to ninety five thousand. And the reason being is that the North Dakota Human Service grant has expired. The building now is owned privately and utilities have increased. And for stability and recruitment, some positions have been converted from part time to full time. So that's why they needed the increase in the detox center. The young professionals has stayed the same at a thousand dollars and safe kids is at twenty five thousand for an overall increase of sixty four fifty for our contracted services. The emergency fund is included at point four four mils, which will generate about a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. I anticipate the fund balance and the emergency fund to be about one point three at the end of this year. We are not allowed to levy if our cash balance is above what five mils would generate and that would be one point seven. The next page shows you our revenue and in twenty twenty three, we will get seventy three percent from our, from property tax compared to seventy one percent in twenty twenty two. Other county revenue will get twelve percent and state revenue will get fifteen percent. A notice of estimated property taxes budget hearing notices for mail, August twenty sixth. Are there any questions or requests for changes on the budget?
No question. And it's just. When you talk about ambulance.
Yep.
Is that all true and our rural ambulances?
It is.
So it's all ambulance.
Based on what zone they're in or where the property is located.
Alright. And then my other question was. Contracted services, that's just, those are non mandatory services, right? I mean, those are things that we ought to fund.
They have to provide a service to.
I'm sorry, what?
They have to provide a service to Grand Forks County for us to fund, we have to have a service agreement with them. There are some things that they provide that we are required to provide by law. We see that if they didn't do it, we would have to.
Right, sure, okay. I'm just asking that for clarification.
Sure.
Thank you, that's all I had a question on.
Any other questions?
So if there are no other questions, anyone from the public can be heard at this time, since it is public here. So if there is anybody here that wants to speak on the budget, they can step forward to the podium and state their name for the record.
Why? I don't know what this is all about. My brother's property or my trustee of it and I wanted to see. Choice room.
What was your question?
I wanted to see if there's any way of getting the taxes lowered on that property of it.
So are you talking about the valuation, you think the valuation is too high?
I don't know, I don't know what this is all about. I don't know. I just wanna get, I just wanna get the property taxes lowered if possible. I just wanna get, I just wanna get the property taxes lowered, if possible.
Looks like Mr. Chair, looks like the, the property valuation statement that could.
Right, right.
So that's the estimated.
Right, and an individual piece, but there's a procedure for that.
Right.
Because there is no water on the property.
This is not the valuation of meeting. This is the budget hearing, so if you have a question about what's being funded.
No.
So the valuation. Maybe we could give you the tax equalization director's number? And you could contact them after the meeting?
And also.
He passed away.
Oh, okay.
And then trustee.
Because the city sometimes will. Will offset some of those taxes that you have to pay based on your age, yourself, or your, your income. I know he's deceased, but did he cast just?
Yeah.
I, I think maybe.
So now I'm responsible for the taxes.
Yeah, but I think maybe they could still, because we're in the same tax year, whatever that they, they might be able to make an adjustment. But I know elderly and veterans, veterans can have their property taxes reduced. Or they, they don't, they aren't reduced, but they are compensated.
Needs to start at the tax office.
Ma'am, are you, you, you use the word trustee, are you the personal representative of the estate? Or as administrator of the state, or are you really the trustee of the trust?
I'm the trustee of the trust.
So there is a trust, so you talk to the lawyer who.
It hasn't gotten back to me yet.
That's right. Okay.
Okay, so I don't need to do anything else then? Okay.
Start, you start with that person, and they can help you work.
Alright.
See if there's something you can do.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, is there anyone else in the public that wants to speak on the budget? I am not, I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget presented at a net levy of twenty-five million, eight sixty-eight, nine twenty-one, which includes a five percent cost of living increase on January one, twenty twenty-three, including the sheriff's state's attorney and commission, and a step increase for all qualified employees on their seniority dates in twenty twenty-three. That levy excludes state garrison, ambulance, senior citizens, and airport levies. Mr. Chair, I would move approval of that motion.
Second. Second, and, and I, I'm a little confused, but I, it also, that possibility also applies to the employees.
Yes, right, yes.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second on that, any further discussion on the preliminary budgets? Being done for me?
Final budget?
Or, yes. I guess it will be.
Oh. Yeah, I did.
It says preliminary, but it'll be our final one. Motion is for the final budget.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the final budget for twenty.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing, the servants agreement said, or stand, Dan. There's seven servants agreements that are part of this budget, and I need a motion to approve those.
They're all listed, they're under contracted service, and youth, youth works is gone, so. Can we have a motion?
We have a motion on all of them together, because they're, yeah, okay. And we will approve of the, of the service agreement, service and restitution, circle of friends, safe kids. C C B I C, Doc Center, and Grand Forks Young Professionals.
Okay, we have a motion.
We say seven, or we say eight?
One is not in there, because we no longer are funding.
That's right, this is your own, never mind.
We've taken that over ourselves. Uh, so we have a budget on, or a budget, we have a motion on the seven. We have a second.
A second.
Second by commissioner, not. Excuse me. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anything else? How we? Move on. Yeah, the county plan. Mr. Magnuson, thank you.
Question, I have one item today. It is considered a flat application, John Gallagher for Drew subdivision. It's just a tree loss on nine point three acres, section one of Michigan Township. The post plant's located near the intersection of Fourteenth Street Northeast and Sixth Avenue Northeast. See Thompson's located one mile to northeast reference. Property currently has existing dwelling and other agricultural buildings located on it. Certainly uses our agricultural land and rural residences. According to land use plans, within our rural residential, single-family districts. It performs all the gold policies there have been. As far as the zoning art is, it's located within our rural residential, single-family, R R one zoning district, you know. Lots of building implements conform to the performance standards. As far as the background, as you can see on the attached plaque, I entered a photo. They're looking at doing three lots, ratio in size two point eight, seven acres to uh, three point one acres. Lot one has an existing access to Fourteenth Street. Lots two, tree with shared access to Sixth Avenue Northeast. Uh, no additional accesses to the township or road system would be permitted, or you get uh, the purpose applies, splits, exists in Omaha on, off from the distant farming operations. Michigan Township recommended approval with no comments. Steph had no concerns with requests, the planning commission recommended approval at their August ninth meeting. I know on the staff accord does say Andrew subdivision, we found out there was another Andrew subdivision, so actually changed true subdivision. So I just wanted to note that. Um, with that, I think you have to answer another questions.
Any questions?
I'll make motion to approve Steph's recommendation.
Thank you very much, we have a motion. Second by Commissioner Peach to approve, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, wants to pass it.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. West.
My report's missing.
It's not working.
Better motor graders today. They're supposed to have them August first of the, today, so that's a good day, so we made that swap today and had much over at R D O and. We did, we had all twelve blades going on the road, they're drilling up, taking video and.
Oh, cool. Like the last time, it's, it's, it's really interesting. It's, you can be really proud of that.
What, twelve new graders?
We do. Yeah, and it's gonna take us a few weeks, at least a couple weeks to make transition, there's a lot of work to do to the old machines. We have to fix up, replace glass and tires and every blade needs a new piece of glass or multiple pieces of glass from broken chips and spiders and things like that. Swap airlifts, tires, lights, GPS units, hydraulic things moved from old machines, so it takes a while. So we have all the old machines that are new, the new machines are on our lot, were out to the county already. And then, couple at a time, we'll bring the old ones to our shop, make the swap, bring them back, you know, there's. Keep doing that for a couple weeks and get rolling, so. Mission or not, if you sent me an email about an update, I haven't had a chance to look at that, did you want that addressed is?
No.
Okay, we can talk about it later if you want.
An update, oh, no, but you're gonna talk about.
Absolutely, yeah, that's our agenda, but.
Yeah, I just wanna know if. I don't know what I want.
Okay, we won't worry about that.
We won't worry about it.
So, okay. Uh, we did conduct interviews for our bridge program for the next few years, and we conducted those yesterday, so I apologize, that's why the information was not in the packet. Under a tight timeframe and trying to keep things moving and appease our DOT partners. This is for eleven structures throughout the county. One is that big bridge on County Five, and the rest would be box shoulders or low water crossings throughout the whole county. Uh, four firms submitted. Uh, we did not have time to review the proposals before we scheduled interviews. So to narrow it down, sometimes you can narrow it down, this is three consultants to interview. Um, so we scheduled all the inter, or scheduled the interviews, interviewed all four to save time, get consultants plenty of time to prepare. In that meantime, we reviewed the proposals, conducted interviews, uh, re, uh, rate and scored the interviews. One significant item that the selection committee discussed was, since we do have three separate DOT project numbers, we could hire one, two, or three consultants. We talked about in the selection committee and asked each of the consultants as well to. Everybody was in agreement that it would be best to hire one consultant for efficiencies and ease of contracting, uh, reducing mobilization costs, et cetera. The selection committee did unanimously recommend K L J as the selected consultant. And. What sums up any questions? We would recommend K L J be selected for. I have the rankings on the second sheet. And a little summary that I turned into the DOT on the third sheet. Of the four firms that submitted and the times they're interviewed and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would make a recommendation that we go along with the selection committee's recommendation of K L J for the three projects.
Our recommendation.
Motion, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion.
My second is a.
Sure.
Is.
You know.
An evaluator, maybe not.
Well, we have Commissioner Peach on her hands, if I.
I'll say you met, I'll say.
Represent from K L G in the room here today, too, if anybody does have any questions.
Uh, okay, we have a motion and a second, we have any further discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Open pass, it's K L J's. Anything else, Mr. West?
I ordered a bunch of box shoulders, didn't comment. Do you like me to bring a list the next meeting for approval? And I got a bit, they're gonna be over a hundred thousand. There's like six, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, you're gonna bring them to us for what reason? You're not gonna have the bids yet, are you?
No.
I always wonder about that, a tenure budget, you're gonna do it, why do you, why does he have to come to us to ask? And ask to bid it? Or he can simply bid it, and we don't have to approve it, so I think you can just go ahead and bid it. And if we don't like it, we're not gonna approve it. Well, it just seems a trip, I think, I, I don't.
It, because the advertisement says by the order of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
So. And at some level, I need board approval before that hits the papers.
Come on back, come on back, okay. I saved you a day here, so that's fine.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Sheriff Snyder.
Good afternoon, Chairman, both members of the commission. Uh, today I'm requesting to have our contract with the, uh, vision with the state in our quote a vision zero outreach coordinator position be renewed for their fiscal year, which begins October first, twenty twenty-two. This is for our outreach coordinator, Ms. Caitlin Atkinson, who's been with us now for a wonderful, uh, year plus, I believe it has been. She's been doing a great job, we're happy to have her, and this would just be uh, renewing it annually as, as we had received that grant for her position. The, the appendix and contract has been reviewed by the state's attorney, who stated that she did not see any issues with the, with the contract, and I'm requesting chair signature.
Question?
Yes.
She, she's not for the region, she's just for Grand.
She is northeast regional, yes, so she covers at least seventeen counties. The station of our, our valley.
Anything?
The state contributes, contributes everything, yeah.
It's supervised project.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. With signature. Vision Zero Outreach Coordinator Program. Uh, with the signature, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Ringan, any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion passes.
Thank you, uh, the only other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is not on the agenda. Uh, one of our deputies, Corporal Shane Rothenberger, was awarded a pretty significant award, uh, through the International Association of Chiefs of Police. He's recognized as a member of their forty under forty designation, or call, I guess you would call it. He was nominated by his sergeant, Aaron Davidson, for the award, and, uh, we're very fortunate to have him receive that award. It was announced September first, I believe. He'll be traveling to Dallas, Texas to a, a formal presentation at their, at their annual banquet, so. Pretty cool deal, he is the third one in the state of North Dakota, the first in our county to ever receive the award, so. We're pretty proud of that accomplishment, we're glad to have him here.
Very sorry to go in the hero.
Did a good job, so.
Please congratulate him.
Congratulate him for us.
For sure, I have nothing further.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To Mr. Ford. Thanks, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, uh, for the first item, I'm gonna throw it over to Ms. Leon, the whole mailer.
The chair members of the commission, so we talked about this event in the past. Uh, this was the idea of doing another mailer for voter education on county measure, or county ballot measures one and two. So we've been working with form printing again, the wording should be in the packets. The structure didn't translate as it would look, but that's the content. Uh, and then estimated total cost at this point is nine thousand dollars. Uh, if approved, we would go back to form printing to receive renderings, and then we would aim to send them out on the week of the tenth. But any questions, I know, wish your folks, yep.
Well, I'll, I'll point out, uh, uh, I, I don't like the sales tax wording, it says a half cent sales taxes proposed in the further raising property taxes to fund public safety and infrastructure. That doesn't accurately reflect our, what we're doing. We already raised approximately seven mils of taxes in the coming year to fund that correctional center, and that, that will stay on unless this happens to pass. But I think it should be clear that those seven mils won't be on there, we're not, we're not asking for half percent sales tax and seven mils, and I think that the inference is, is there that we've already. That's what's going on, and that's not true. I'd like to change that, I would say that something to the effect that would replace the seven mils previously assessed for the correctional center for pass. I'd like to change that, I would say that something to the effect that would replace the seven mils previously assessed for the correctional center for paths. I don't want the public to think that we're asking for sales tax and seven mils, because that's not right, or that's not true. So, Mr. Chair, under the second column, county measure two, sales tax, um, when you get to expect it to generate five million per year. And this list out sixty twenty twenty, uh, we could work with uh, Ms. Lamstead on adding another bullet. Speaking to the, to the matter that, that if passed, it would replace the seven mils on capital construction. So that that would be clear.
Yeah, I thought I would like, I don't know what.
Yeah, that's fine.
If, if we can, if I can ask of the board, um, in order to meet the deadline. If we, if we could have this, if the board wishes, if we could have this approved contingent done, just fixing that and then state's attorney review and or. Chair review, uh, that way we could get it fixed and then get the, the mailers out to all the households in the county.
So first mailer that went out, is that also nine thousand dollars? That was about eight thousand two hundred. I'm really correct.
I got a question.
Yeah.
If, I heard from a lot of people.
The what?
They didn't get the first mailer.
I did.
And how do we make sure everybody gets it this time?
Yeah, so we will be letting form printing know if we move forward this, with this, that we've received a lot of those uh, comments. I'm not sure if it was something on form printing's end, or if it was something on the post office end. And so I'm not sure how much we can do about the post office end, that being said, we're also going to pair this. As much as we can with the social media push and getting it out through other ways, with the newspaper, continuing to push that way. And we will be sure to make those concerns, no.
And, and I think in all fairness, when you send them as mail, you're not going to get a hundred percent, that's just. People, old things happen, it's just, you know, some people might throw it out the junk mail or. But it isn't a hundred percent, but yes, Commissioner.
Just a question on the procedure on bulk mailing. You actually have to get a form filed with each post office in the county, don't you?
That's, that's correct, Commissioner Ringan, that, that's correct, in forum, the last time forum printing takes care of that permit. When the post office forum print, so who we went with the last time and who Ms. Leon has been dialoguing with again, they take care of that. Yeah, they, they, you fill out a permit, mass mailer permit with the post office.
It, I've been going a couple of mass mailings and get select the precincts surrounding the post office that they're going to go to. And theoretically, they shouldn't hit every mailbox in the county, but there were a number of people, I guess, who claimed they didn't get it.
Yeah, you know.
It does require human beings to, to put them in every mailbox, and they're doing that all day long with a bunch of stuff, so I'm sure it happens sometimes, but. It is important to get out of this.
Yeah, you select every zip code that you want.
Yeah. Yeah.
If, if the commission was to approve it, uh, probably have to come out of cash area unless Ms. Nelson has another, another thought.
Mr. Chairman, there was a question, I think, County General was like.
Do you need a motion? Your approval of the proposed mailing with the addition of the uh, explanation of the seven mils and uh, for mass mailing throughout the county.
So can that motion?
Second, Mr. Peach, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Open passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have two quick items for the commission to review and action. The first one has to do with the first floor uh, uh, restrooms remodel. We have received the final invoice from Vasek Construction, however, there was an additional six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Added to the fight, to, to what was already approved. The six hundred and seventy-one dollars is because uh, when they pulled this wall off, she rock off, they found rotted stud walls, or studs between the walls, excuse me, so. Before I can, I can sign off that this work is complete, I need the commission to approve the change order in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Do you think anytime you're doing a bathroom project to that size, it's getting spent, I'm surprised it was more, so.
It, it looks beautiful down there.
It does, that's a very good point, I haven't been in the ladies, but I stopped in the.
I haven't been in the men, but. The ladies.
Well, we.
Very nice.
Recording, yes, it, it's a vast improvement over the way it was down there, so, good, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to uh, pay the additional six hundred and seventy-one dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that's approved, and we don't need to approve the regular bill, that's already taken care of.
Yes, sir, that's correct, you're good.
The final item, and this was uh, this was not in your package because I didn't receive the quote from Vasek Construction until Friday night. So the commission had approved the remodel of two restrooms in the capital improvement budget uh, at the beginning of the year. One was for first floor, one was actually for second, they were both in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we've, obviously, we've run into supply chain issues, staffing issues with contractors. So the first floor restroom is finished, uh, and Mr. Vasek had provided me a second quote to start on the second uh, floor bathrooms. However, now that it's uh, almost October, with inflation and staffing issues. The quote is now seventy thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So two things, I, I cannot green light the project because the commission approved it at fifty. And the new estimate is at seventy thousand one twenty-eight, so the commission would need to decide on that, approve that. And actually, Mr. Gasheski, even though the commission approved second floor, Mr. Gasheski would rather go to third, third floor restrooms to be next on the list, so. With requesting commission approval to amend, it would be basically amending the original fifty thousand dollar approval for that restroom to seventy thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
On a capital improvement, that's total for both restrooms.
Uh, the seventy would just be to start the next one, that was second floor.
Right, but it's both men's and women's.
Yes, sir, yes, correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Gasheski would actually like to see it be done on third, not second.
Yeah, there gets a lot of business, public health is right there, I, I have to be up there the other day, and people coming, going outside there, so.
Any comments, yes?
Mr. Chair, I would like more approval of that motion to boost the budget.
Okay.
I mean, now that the capital improvement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner off, we appreciate the work that's been done so far. How you do? Uh, okay, we have a motion and a second, do a uh, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion passed, that's all I have. We're down to uh, the state's attorney, item eleven.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I have a few items for your review today. The first one is included in the packet, uh, this is, uh, I would request approval of uh, this contract. This is for our Westlaw service, our attorneys use to conduct their legal research. As everything these days, there is an increase in the cost. However, Westlaw has kindly agreed to give us a credit for next year since our budget has been set for next year, so it should. Maintain the same cost for our twenty twenty-three year. This contract is a three-year contract, so the second and third year with the increase. So I would request a motion for the chair's signature.
Okay, uh, I guess I'm a little confused, there's, there are two different numbers, there are seventeen hundred something and fifteen hundred something a month, is that, are we approving both of those, or?
So our current contract is up, it will be at the end of October this year, so um, for this calendar year. The last two months will be the fifteen hundred dollars, which uh, in, is indicated as the bridge term of two months.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
The new cost is the seventeen forty-four. In that, uh, for that amount, they are giving us two five hundred dollar credits in uh, twenty twenty-three. Which would bring our overall yearly cost down to uh, what we have budgeted for.
Okay. Motion approved.
I make that motion.
Motion will be approved by, and chair's signature on that also, I think.
Second.
Okay, motion approved and second with chair's signature, any further discussion on legal services? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, very good, next. Swam state.
Thank you. Um, the next item is the ARPA subrecipients agreements, if you recall, uh, several months ago, you approved a. Number of subrecipients agreements for the uh, number of nonprofits that uh, were receiving some of the county's ARPA funds. Since that date, we've received further guidance from the federal government. Ms. Nelson, Mr. Ford and I have been reviewing it. Part of that guidance is some clarification on whether a recipient is a subrecipient or a beneficiary. The difference in the uh, requirement, since there's a lot more monitoring to do when somebody fits the category as a subrecipient than if they are a beneficiary. So for five of the uh, what we believe were subrecipients would be Ultra, Arpa, Decanis, Spectra, CBIC. And the Red River Children's Advocacy Center, uh, those five agencies we entered into a subrecipients agreement with. Now, um, after review of this uh, newer guidance, we believe that they would qualify as being a beneficiary. So um, as part of the packet, there is an addendum that I would request a motion for the chair's signature on. To add to each of these five agencies' subrecipients agreement, um, that clarifies that they are no longer a subrecipient. That they are considered a beneficiary. It also provides that um, the category that they are uh. Allocated to is uh, moved to two point three four, which is assistance to nonprofits for a negative economic impact. Though, that's the most significant change that this addendum would make to those subrecipients. So I would ask for a motion for the chair's signature on five addendums for each of those uh, agencies that I listed.
So move, and motion, uh, second by uh, Commissioner Peach, any further discussion on this? Seems like it eliminates paper, alright. Very good, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. Motion passed.
Thank you. The next item I have is um, Ms. Nelson has been working on a checklist. That outlines some of the items that we need to collect for the recipients of the ARPA funds or the beneficiaries or subrecipients. For auditing purposes, we felt it would be best that um, this be in writing and approved by the board. These are some of the requirements that the federal guidance provides, we have to review or consider prior to dispersing any funds. So um, I would ask for a motion from the board to approve this uh, checklist for the ARPA funds distribution.
Okay, do we, do we have a motion to approve the checklist for the ARPA funds distribution?
Oh, moved.
Motion by Commissioner Peach, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Non, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Chair, that, anything else?
I do have one additional item, um, as part of the final budget that was approved, uh, our office. Is converting a part-time legal secretary position to a full-time legal secretary. Um, I have consulted with uh, the Finance and Tax Office and we do have room in our budget for twenty twenty-two. To hire that position now, and so I would request that we be permitted to start the hiring and onboarding process for that position. Because it, it does take a considerable amount of time to uh, train up a legal secretary, so uh, if we're able to start the hiring process now. They'll be uh, working fully in the beginning of the year.
So we'll make that like effective for October first, you probably won't find it by then anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
So long as we can fix it.
Sure, so move, motion by Commissioner Ross to uh, start that, the legal signature of the position. As of October first of this year, do we have a second? Second, second by Commissioner Ringan, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most, motion passes.
Thank you very much, nothing further.
Many reports, uh, let's start with you, Commissioner Ross, what do you got?
Uh, okay, so the third board did not uh, meet last week because there was not enough. Board members that could uh, make a quorum. And so I suppose it will be set now for October sometime. The other MVO is tomorrow at twelve noon, and I'm sure we'll discuss bridges, which we always do. For that, that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ringan.
Well, I was, some of you, I've attended the Larmour Town Hall, Larmour number one, I guess there's going to be a second one. And there was a lively, uh, lively group at that, so it was interesting. And I know some of you have had the benefits, uh, the other thing is, uh, I put an article in the north that, yeah, I call it Commissioners Comments, and I do it on a random basis. So not, certainly not scheduled, but I did an article on Home Rule, ran it through administration a little bit, and talked about some things. And I think I did get it right, on the seven mills uh, going away uh, later on, so got some favorable response to that because. People don't read the Herald anymore, it seems, but they do read the local town newspapers, so. That's all I.
And the only place I can find that paper copy is up here, which I like seeing once a while, Commissioner Non.
I, I have a question on, on that with the seven, I don't think I've ever quite understood that with the seven mills going away, I did, I did it to a point that. Here, and the answer is from here, but you know, we say that the seven mills would go away, but. Technically. Couldn't maybe only five mills go away because of the increases on, I mean, things that might come up that we can't plan for.
And, yeah, and then just for clarification, the seven mills would go away. A year from now, because it's already in our budget, we can't change, this budget's locked in, and we don't know whether that sales tax has passed, we couldn't do that. But we, you know, yes and no, I think if the sales tax is passed with three million dollars over twenty years or twenty-five years, it actually is. That would more than pay for that project and probably help pay for the sheriff's project also. To get him into a building, so I, I don't anticipate. You know, unless we run, I guess we can't ever guess what the cost of living or inflation is going to do here over the next decade, but unless that becomes. Really extreme, I think we're gonna be able to be alright with that.
Okay.
And, and I think what we talked about last time was. Even though we can't foresee a catastrophe, the commission seems committed to removing that unless something happens that just causes.
Unforeseen.
Be able to be done.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we've all agreed to that, so.
Haven't been able to wrap that, but like, I just. Our crazy world seems happen and that we can never plan for.
Right.
We might have to increase our mills for whatever reason, and so then that. Somebody would point that out, well, you said you were going to take away seven mills, will we be able to also increase?
Well, and it's, you know, it's for infrastructure and we can't, I, I think it'll pay for these projects that we're talking about. Sheriff's Law Enforcement, some type of facility for handling detention and the correctional center. I guess we can't ever say twenty-five years from now. I'd like to be wrong, but I don't think that's happening. We don't know how the condition of this building or courthouse or anything else either, so that, those things are unforeseen, and they could require some attention, but for right now, it looks pretty positive, I think. require some attention, but for right now, it looks pretty positive, I think.
And also, somebody might hold you to that. And so you might wanna
Very good reason to.
Might, I know, but you might wanna think of being able to say something in your presentation about that.
Well, I think we've said all along.
Know what you're saying, so.
We've said all along that it applies to this correctional center addition, juvenile detention addition, and some form of of uh facility for the sheriff's office down the road, which once again, we're gonna have to look and see where that, what happens down the road, so. You know, the uh, the other optimistic thing is, is if our community continues to grow and sales normally go up, that money will, you know, right now is projected at five billion dollars. It will be more than five billion, you know, maybe ten, fifteen years from now, it'll be six million dollars, who knows, so. Good point, though.
Well, you know, it's just that's what the, that's what the public hears, the the seven mills will go away.
Yeah.
And so, you know, you're saying that um they may go away, or the correctional facility or whatever, but yet then there might still be an increase for some other reason. And so you don't end up with the end result of seven mills going away.
Why, I think the seven, the seven mills.
Hold you to that. That's all I wanna say.
Yeah, yeah, the seven mills will go away during the next few years, but as I said, if
Start.
Yeah, let's start. If something would happen to this building or the correction or the not correctional center, the courthouse building or something like that that we can't foresee, then we have, we would, but whoever the commission is then would have to address the building, so. But that, I, I, my belief that the the sales tax will take care of those three, in essence, law enforcement type buildings that we need. Anything, anything from your portfolio?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think I told you last time, um, on September eighth, um, the Resolutions Committee for the North Dakota County Commissioners Association met via zone with our version staff from the Association of Counties and to discuss and review proposed resolutions that will be presented to all the the county commissioner members during the annual Bismarck conference or convention in October, and resolutions that are ultimately approved, then would determine, they determine policy for us, and um I was asked to represent Region Four on that. And so we reviewed current proposed resolutions for two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and along with that, we also reviewed outstanding um proposed resolutions from two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty. And the reason that they were outstanding is that they were submitted by counties, but um they determined that they needed to have studies done, and so they just kind of were put on hold, and so we just were reviewing those again. And so some of the topics for two thousand twenty-two alone were shelter care support, supportive of court structure, social services, uh employee equity compensation, support for the North Dakota coal industry, law enforcement training funding, centrally assessed property valuation, statewide interoperable radio network funding, and behavioral health. And then proposed outstanding resolutions discussed again in prior years included topics um uh law enforcement, recruitment, retention, North Dakota's defined benefit retirement plan, legacy funds, prison population management, jail standards, and wetland medications, and so those, it was, it was a lengthy conversation, interesting one, but those are what will be coming before um the commissioners at at the convention. And then Nick talked about yesterday, yes, it was yesterday, where Nick Daryl and I did the interviews, your RFPs, uh and also yesterday, Emergency Management Board met for their quarterly meeting, and we had some good discussions there. And they still have a vacancy within their department that they are attempting to, working on fulfilling or filling. Um, then next name will be in December there. I heard about the new graders. Tomorrow, I'm going to um participate in the Northeast Public Health Preparedness Partners conference, uh caller video conference call, and they're always interesting and very informative, so a lot of good information there. Also tomorrow is the monthly library board meeting at four. And then at from two until three, there will be refreshments in the dedication or ribbon cutting uh for the new outdoor music garden on the library grounds. Have you seen that up?
No.
And um, and so that's kind of exciting, and so the library board will also be meeting with tomorrow, will also be meeting with um KJ to finish up the project, proposed plans for the children's remodel of the children's section of the library. We didn't do that when we remodeled all the rest. Um, but so if they get, the board gives approval, then they will start that project. I believe they can start it immediately because they're saying that November, maybe through January. That's what I've been told is that the anticipated will take to to um get that completed, so we're excited about that one as well, so. And I know you're wondering about the motor grader training, and that's
On the tip of my tongue.
I know. I could see that. I read it in your eyes.
So you take that too, or just?
Yes, she did.
I usually do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have in the past and, you know, other, you know, I I've learned all about gravel, the state, but so good, good training, you know, so I've heard, you know, I know how the curves go in the road and gravel and all that other stuff, so you gotta know those terminologies when you're when they're talking to you, others, I still.
You just have to start calling late.
Yeah. I might apply for a job as a grader here, you never know, just preparing. And then um September twenty-seventh, I do plan to attend the Wake Up to U N D breakfast. So we went to Memorial Union, which I'm excited about because I have not visited that facility yet.
Three guys, I guess.
So who's all going?
I am.
Very nice. Yeah. Do a wake-up call for me? I will.
Next Tuesday, yeah.
So that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Peach.
Um, I recently attended before this meeting the Grand Forks County Zone Board. Lots of uh high numbers with child protective services, and um we certainly do not have enough staff uh to cover that, and Mr. Pickett is working on trying to increase staff because the numbers that we have uh per uh per staff person is just astronomical. And so um they're working to try to improve that. The Zone Board was informed that when the county uh was doing their budget for two thousand twenty-three, the Zone Board does not get that increase because they're not county staff per se. And um they also did not get the increase that state staff are getting. And uh Joelle Bobby was very taken back by that. She understood that that uh increase was supposed to be readily available for the zones, for the uh, the employees of the Zone Board. And I did question that and said, who's making this decision? When it becomes law and the interpretation is supposed to be passed along to the Zone Board employees, who is actually um making sure that that is done? And she did say that there had been, it's uh Human Services, the Department of Human Services. If they have any questions relative to what the interpretation of that law is, they're supposed to contact legal counsel. And she did state that uh in previous situations, there was uh laws that had been passed that didn't come to fruition, or they weren't uh interpreted correctly by DHS staff, and she said that has been a concern in the past. So um that is something I believe the Human Services Board for DHS is supposed to be meeting next week. And she was going to make sure that she brought that up, that they only got their uh two and a half to three percent increase, but nothing beyond that. And so that is very unfortunate for the Zone Board employees, and so hopefully that increases. Mr. Pickett had also requested for three additional staff of the zone here in Grand Forks County because of our numbers, and they were not, um, two were approved, one was not. But it seemed like um in certain other uh zones that are just county only, they seem to have a higher a higher number of employees than Grand Forks County did. Uh, Burley County was one that he did talk about. So hopefully, we can address that, and with uh Joelle on our, as a person on the Zone Board, hopefully, we can um keep moving through that process because it's difficult. We recently had two families of five that they were looking for um foster care, and that's extremely difficult when there's five siblings in one family. And so uh he did talk about some of that. Also, uh, the authority, the airport authority um is doing well, got the whole construction process done in a timely manner um in September, and I believe I talked about that before. Uh, we're moving on with other um projects, and some of those projects will be uh there right now, looking at planning for a new um new construction of the uh Customs Office that will be, that will be built here at the Grand Forks Air Force, and that, or Grand Forks Airport. And that will all be paid for by federal government because it's a customs facility, so that's a positive. Um, I think that's basically all, and I will be attending the Wake Up U N D breakfast next week. So I think that's it.
Um, Commissioner Inge, and I think maybe Ross talked about, we were out at Laramore for the Home Rule meeting. Commissioner Ross and I, Ken Ochs was nice enough to ask us to appear, and we, you know, talked about Home Rule uh last week, I think. Uh, I was also at the Lions Club and the Rotary Club were one of each here in town one day, and talked about Home Rule. Other than that, nothing worth bringing forward, so that would be that for many.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I think that we um need to recognize the significant amount of time that you and Commissioner Ross have spent on the Home Rule, uh the committee, the meetings that you've attended. Um, thank you. On behalf of the rest of us commissioners and behalf of um really trying to get the Home Rule Charter passed through the county, and it is a positive and a win-win for um the residents that we have in Grand Forks County. I think the Herald did a good job in putting a lot of information together. The only sad part is, of course, it was a few weeks back, and that will be a lot of that information doesn't tend to be remembered by the public um when they go to the polls. But um there's been a significant amount of work, not only from you two, but also from Mr. Ford and Gracie Miss Lee in the work that they have done as well, so I, I believe that they do needs to be made public for all the work you've done.
Well, we appreciate it, but you know, it just kind of rotates through here. The next time, it'll be somebody else's turn to be involved. I still go back to Commissioner Naughton during COVID when she was chairman, it was extraordinary, so I wouldn't I wouldn't have traded her for anything on that deal. So I'm, I'm just happy doing what I'm doing, and I think Commissioner Ross is too.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Um, okay, we're down to uh Ms. Nelson, anything that we need to address here with the unfinished business rail crossing safety needs?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, the North Dakota Department of Transportation has asked if you have any uh highway or rail crossing safeties that you needs important, and they have given you a date to submit your concerns.
Mr. Chair, on that deal, I think Nick, Nick should, uh, he probably has some ideas. Uh, Sheriff Andy probably has some ideas based on accidents and.
Yeah.
So I
I will email them the letter.
Okay, that'd be great.
And maybe the uh Lieutenant Fisher with the North Dakota State Patrol here in Grand Forks. Cause they, they take care of a lot of the accidents too, on even county roads, so.
What do you think he got this?
I don't know that he would.
At the state?
Yeah, I don't know if the state would send it to their district offices or not, but uh
I
I think those three entities are very unfortunate, so.
They try, it's I'm guessing Sheriff Snyder would have his email address if you can.
Right, I will.
Takes care of that one, and then we have something from.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the next item, it's a um directors and officers liability policy. You have a building authority, you are on a building authority for the Correctional Center bonds, which are not paid off and will not be paid off until two thousand twenty-five, so we need to continue on this uh director and officer liability policy, and that's about forty-three hundred dollars. So I need a motion for the chair to sign.
So move with chair signature, okay?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's taken care of.
The last item is uh the four H annual awards day, and in the, they request twenty dollars, and we uh have sent them twenty dollars.
I'm gonna make a motion that we continue to support.
Okay.
And
For the twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Yep. One year I convinced you to go forty, but I'd be happy if we just, if we do. And that, that, they'll be giving that out probably in October when they have their the, the awards night and things like that, and that will be in what's a little town on the highway beyond Thompson.
Redmond?
Right down.
Little town.
And you'll probably, well, one of you two will probably be asked to give.
Which two?
One of you two. I don't know if it would be the Fair Board Commissioner or um Extension Office.
Uh, yeah.
It's okay, they give you this speech to make. So you're okay.
Wait, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, I'm I wanted to go two.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I have four. Mr. Chair, I have one thing under new business. Uh, I would like to uh see prior to the beginning of every county commission meeting that we recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. And uh I was very impressed with the city, they do it prior to their city council meetings. And I would like to see that as part of our uh what we do prior to the beginning of our meetings.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed, so that's our agenda. Uh, and I think that's it. Mr. Ross, what do you say?
I say I would make a motion to the chair.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to the chair. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Peach, all in favor? Second by Commissioner Peach, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good job, wow, great idea.